Good evening, everyone. To tonight's meeting of the Gardner zoning board of appeals, October 21st. And we'll get, it should be, it's a light night, we have one case. But before we get started, I'm gonna go over the ground rules by which this board operates. In Gardner, three, four members out of five of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. You'll see, we have four tonight, and we have several that can't make it, so this will be the four. Applications will normally hear any sequence in which they appeared in a public notice. All hearings shall be open to the public, and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf, or be represented by agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. Butters to the property present shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application shall be heard. The board must render its decision regarding variance request within 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application was filed in the office of the city court. Board must render its decision regarding special permits within 90 days after the closing of the public hearing. All four members out of five, or in this case tonight, all four members, must vote in favor of the variance or special permit for be granted and approved. When you have a five-member board, it's not, if four out of five is a majority, that's okay. When doing four, four members like this evening, there's no, no majority. It has to be unanimous. Okay, the right to appeal the decision of this board is provided for in chapter 48 of the zoning act. The information is available in the office of the city clerk. No variance or special permit or any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in the office of the city clerk, and no appeals have been filed and is recorded in the registry of deeds for the county or district. The board requests that each person identify himself or herself as to name and address before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearing, side at my far left, Robert Rice, David Antea, to my right, Richard Hanks, and myself, Ray LaFonda's chair. The meeting will be taped and videotaped. Does anyone object to that? Okay, are we ready to begin? Okay, let's begin. So the first individual, so I'm gonna read the case first. He didn't have his mind packed. Okay, the first case tonight. His case 2025-1001, the variance request. NH Signs for Oak Street, parcel ID M22-4-57, seeking sign requirements relief. Who is going to present? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members. My name is Peter Marge, New Hampshire Signs, 66 Goldledge Avenue, Auburn, New Hampshire. Thank you. So requesting a variance for a sign for a site that is currently Shell, but will be come Noreya at 4 Oak Street in Gardner. The site is zoned C1, and we're requesting a variance from the following sections, 675, 970. That refers to signs permitted in commercial and industrial districts, which states, among other things, no portion of wall sign or individual letter sign shall project more than one foot from the face of the wall. We're not, we're compliant with that. The part we're not requesting a variance from is that it says, "In no case shall a sign project above a parapet wall." So my pointer's not working terribly well on those screens for some reason, showing it with mouse. But the sign in question is the real sign on that brown parapet, and the, the, that is really the subject of this discussion. So I'm sure you're familiar with Noreya, there's a number of sites in town, but they're a local brand, Worcester, that's investing heavily in the C-store market. They are a very good, very high-quality brand, and they bring a lot of good, fresh, wholesome foods to neighborhoods. The interior of the stores are bright, well, well-lit. The exteriors are also bright and well-lit, and they've been taking sites like, for example, Shell, and converting them to Noreya sites. They have had multiple accolades for the design, appearance, and the way that they operate these stores. So recently, for the second year in a row, they won a C-store in the country, an accolade for being the top C-store in the country. So they're a welcome addition to the conventional, somewhat downtrodden branded sites. One of the things about Noreya is that the logo is round, so that creates some different sort of issues from your typical linear logo. So if you look at the Sicko logo, it's linear. Mobiler's logo, in Noreya's case, it's a round logo. And if you look at what we're proposing, we're actually allowed 80 square feet of signage on that wall. The Dunkin' is 13 square feet, and the sign we're requesting is 16, so we're well under the 80 square feet that we would be allowed. The issue is really the fact that the sign, the building inspector, the previous building inspector, I believe, determined that the sign protrudes above a parapet wall. There's a little bit of discussion on that. But to the points of the variance, the enforcement of the provisions of this code would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. The code refers in simple terms to parapet wall, but it doesn't define it clearly. It does, however, say that the following is not a sign, integral decorative or architectural features of the building. That brown piece that you see the Noreya logo on is actually a, it's a structure made of a product called Nichiha board, which is a plastic, plasticized metal piece, and it forms a proper parapet on that, on that wall, to which we attach sign, that particular sign, and a couple of decorative features. I think the building inspector had determined that the parapet wall in this particular case is the light brown parapet wall, not the dark brown parapet wall, to which we've attached the sign. So that's really what we're asking for, is some relief to allow us to mount the sign on the dark parapet wall, and not have the determination that the light parapet wall is the one that he's talking about. I can, I can go into further detail, but I think it's relatively, hopefully I've explained that relatively clearly. So the sites at a busy intersection, as I'm sure you're aware, West Park and Nichols, approaching traffic has limited visibility due to that island, due to the C-store canopy, to the gas station canopy, the columns, and also the sign. So having a decent sign in that position, particularly a high sign, a larger sign, is particularly important. We'd like to have the sign above the door, because that tells people where the door is, it tells people where the entrance is. So to do a decent-sized Noreya logo in this location, we really have to have it of the size, and we have to mount it to that non-parapet parapet wall, the brown Nichiha wall. And so, really, this requires a configuration, I believe, that we've suggested. It gives much better visibility. If we want to do that, the petitioner, Noreya, would suffer damage, because we're putting a tiny sign on that wall that no one would see. And to me, it's a miniscule difference between putting it where we're putting it and, you know, maintaining the height above the second parapet wall. To the second point, desirable relief may be granted without detriment to the public Good visibility is essential to safe traffic flow. This sign achieves that goal. There's no detriment to the public at all. Clear, readable signage is in of itself a feature that enhances safety, so we'd argue that it promotes safety, it is a positive, has a positive benefit. To the third point, desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this code, but not otherwise. Purpose of code is to promote the general welfare of the city of Gardner, to protect the health and safety, convenience, and general welfare of its inhabitants. This variance improves traffic safety by adding a moderately sized, again, it's a 16-square-foot sign, it just happens to be a round sign, not a square sign or a rectangular sign. Otherwise, it's completely conforming, and it's an invisible location. And Noreya, in of itself, is a worthy addition to this part of town, I believe. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Mr. Rice?
The sign attached to the brown plasticized wood, is that brown plasticized wood a wall system itself, or is it attached to the wall behind it?
It's a wall system in of itself. It's a thick structure built like any other building structure.
Okay, I guess my question is, does the light tan wall run behind your proposed sign?
Yes, it does.
So you are attaching that to the parapet wall?
Correct. But in of itself--
It's not flush with the parapet wall?
It's not flush with the parapet wall, no.
So it's not structural?
It's not structural, no, but I would argue that it falls into the category of integral decorative or architectural features of the building, and that part of it is not a sign, according to the code.
All right. Did you also put the sign at the Shell station on Pearson Boulevard, the Noreya?
I'm gonna have to ask my colleague to answer that. I'll introduce--
Grant Michael, I'm with New Hampshire Signs as well. I kind of run the Noreya account for New Hampshire Signs.
Give me the address, please, before addressing--
Oh, Grant Michael, 66 Goldledge Ave., Auburn, New Hampshire.
This is a vertical sign, in that it is higher than it is wide?
It's actually a perpendicular sign.
At the Pearson Boulevard, it's more horizontal. It is longer than it is high. And did you think about duplicating the dimensions?
No, so they're set up kind of building-specific. We did not do that location. We've done many of their signs, but we haven't done all of them. For instance, we haven't done the other one on Oak Street either. But that has a canopy that comes kind of across that front of that building, and so it doesn't allow the stand, this would be more like their standard procedure or standard like look of the building, where the other one was kind of done because of the canopy restriction going over that building, so it's kind of like elongated there to fit that, I guess. I wasn't involved in that, but it's the only thing, because we have done a couple under canopy ones in New Hampshire that were kind of maybe set up a little differently that were, you know, but this would be kind of, because the sign itself is kind of a circular, when you box it out, it's basically a square. So usually when they build these boxes for the buildings, as far as the building element, that's done as like a square as well, just kind of, it's kind of a box inside of a box. But it is building-specific on what they're doing, storefront doors, like, they try to make sure that the architectural features match up and stuff, so it's not like they have a three-by-six that they throw everywhere, right? It's case by case.
Okay. I think what he's saying is that it's, this is the standard--
So is this the building where that, that's going? So are you renovating the front of the building?
We are not doing anything but Noreya is, and they've got a building permit in, so they have a building permit in for everything that you see up here besides the sign. We are only responsible for the sign itself, but yes, they are doing building renovations to paint the building, add some architectural features, they will build out that box and all that stuff. So that work has nothing to do with us specifically, but yes, it is part of this project.
I didn't know if, are they raising the front area? Do you know? Or is that your sign going right on the same, what am I gonna say? The way this is already built out, so your sign is just going above the two doors?
Yeah, they use a frame construction that they add on to do that, when they add the board handling on the front. But yes, it will not be, they will not like go into the building to do that, it is like kind of built on structure up front as an architectural feature.
And again, I want to be clear, the brown part or tan part of your sign is going to be attached right to here, and then the sign itself will be attached to the tan section?
Correct. Oh, to the, it'll be attached in the Noreya board?
Yeah, it gets attached in the Noreya board.
Okay, all right. So it's like two parts. You have the base, which is the tan, and then the second part would be the sign itself?
Ah, so the, you've got, the building would be the light tan that's up there, that light beige, and then they build, they basically frame out an area that they put that Nichia system on, so that'd be kind of your second thing, and then we put our sign onto that, they call it corniceau, or whatever. We just put our sign onto that, and the Nichia board is structural enough that we can attach our sign into that Nichia.
And it's a thick, you know, it's a thick--
Yeah, it's like your, you know, your trekstepping for your, a deck of your house, same type of material.
But the structure is, the structure is a deep structure, it's not a--
It's framed out like a wall would be.
Okay, thank you.
You all set?
Yeah.
Good evening, gentlemen. So is that the only sign you're doing, there's right now, when I come down, there's a pole sign that says Shell on it, are you putting a logo on that as well?
So we have permits for everything else, so the main ID, which would be that free-standing sign that you see, the pole sign. So that is basically staying within the same framework, only the Shell goes away, it becomes Noreya, we update kind of the digits and stuff like that, but we have a permit for that. And then there's two canopy logos existing that are on the, that like Shell Pactons that are on the canopy. And those basically, those come off and they get replaced. There's blue ones of these, so they're blue with like the white and brown, those go on the canopy. So we have permits for those, and then the only other thing is this building sign, it's just kind of their, their standard package there. And the Dunkin' Donuts is existing, that doesn't, that's not--
Right, so, so I can see that you brought up the Shell sign, that's, that's gonna become a Noreya logo on that.
Yeah, just like that, yep.
And then on the canopy, you're gonna have the Noreya on the corners of the canopy?
Yep, yeah. It's basically turning from Shell.
So, so this, this sign that you're trying to go above the parapet is just to say, hey, here's my front door?
Correct. And try and identify the front door. And I'd argue that it's not really, the Nichia board structure is not really a sign, it's more like a parapet wall of its own, all on its own.
So, but the, but the whole Doc Brown with the circle that says Noreya, that's kind of their, their logo, that background, the Doc Brown backdrop, correct?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I mean, not always, that's their intended feature, but if you look at like, what's the, one of the other ones in sight, it's basically on a wood background, so sometimes when they have like a peaked roof, depending on what has been there before, and there's siding on there, they'll paint the siding like a dark brown and put that on there too. So it's not always like that's part of the sign, like, we wouldn't, on a, on a situation like that, we wouldn't build one of these boxes just to put that box on there and put the sign on there. It's not like that. This is like an architectural feature that they do, the stores, because the stores, their branding, even though it's the same name, kind of, the look on the store they have here is kind of their convenience store look, and then the blue with all the other stuff is like the fuel, so that's why a lot of times you'll see, like, it'll still be Shell, but they'll have like a Noreya convenience store. So there is some like variations to like the differences here, it's not just like, it's obviously subtle, because it's the same logos, but it is a differentiating feature between like the convenience store section and the gas section.
Yeah, well, I've seen several Noreyas, and like I said, you know, they're, they're a great store, they do a good job. And I've seen them from little tiny Noreyas to bigger ones, so it's, it's not one-size-fits-all, obviously.
It isn't, but the, the intent is to make the look move across the entire Noreya network. You've got to remember that Noreya has been doing C-stores like this for quite some time, the design has evolved over time. This is pretty well the standard look and feel that they want to achieve, if at all they can, so that when you go to a Noreya here, one in Worcester, or one in Auburn, New Hampshire, or wherever, you have the same look. So that's the intent. Now, you will see other Noreyas, possibly older Noreyas, that have morphed over time, and they'll catch up on the second cycle of renovation.
Yeah, obviously, this is their logo, this is their, you know, no difference in the other big restaurants and stuff, you see their Golden Art, you know what they are. So, same thing, you see their sign, you know who they are, you know what's inside them. I guess my questioning comes in, okay, so this, this sign is trying to let you know where your front door is, because you already got the, your sign on the pole, and that's gonna be there, that you're gonna pick that up as you come down the street, or come up the other way, because I'm sure it's two-sided, and then you have on the corners of the canopy, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So this identifies the C-store more completely. One of the things that, one of the things that is the arbiter of success for Noreya is that the gasoline business has become less and less important, and the C-store business is becoming more and more important. So if you go to that Shell station, it's the typical, you know, chips and Coke and, you know, chewing gum and cigarettes and that sort of stuff. What Noreya's trying to do is they're trying to promote this, almost like a mini--
Oh, I've been in the stores, yeah.
So it's a high quality type thing, so identifying the door is pretty, pretty important to them, and that's, that's the real purpose behind this.
The sign itself is within code, it's just the placement of it, how it relates to the building.
Correct. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is where's the hardship of, has to stick up above the parapet? Again, you, I'm gonna see you, I could always see the Shell, I could always see that's a food, I could always see that coming down the road, you know, I've always seen that, you know, so it's, it's not like, by that sticking up proud, that that's gonna lure me any more than this there. You know, so I'm just tossing that out there, I'm just trying to see where the hardship is that, what makes this unique from the next person that wants to extend over the parapet?
Well, part, part of the issue is obviously the definition of a parapet wall. And I understand the original intent of the code, it's a common part of sign code, you don't want bits sticking up above roof lines, and most, you know, many, many towns have that restriction. In this particular case, the big question is, is this parapet wall, is it, in denying the variance, is it achieving the goal of what you're trying to achieve, which is making sure there's not signs sticking up in the air all over the place, but they're on firm backers? So I'd argue that, I'd argue in this particular case, if we would have put a round logo on that wall, it would be absolutely tiny. And the argument also would be that the Nichia is not really a parapet wall, it's a part of the integral structure of the building. It's not load-bearing, it doesn't carry any load, or it doesn't have any feature other than a sort of an architectural feature, but it is nevertheless an architectural feature, not a sign, as the code defines it.
Which code?
Your code.
As only one of this?
So the code basically says, integral, it says the following is not a sign, integral decorative or architectural features of the building. And I don't have that section to handy, but I know that it's in the, in the Gardner code.
So your, your intent is to build an architectural feature?
Yes.
Well, not obviously, but Noreya--
Well-- Yeah, we're arguing--
Because that, that's, what's sticking above the parapet now, although the roof line is not there, so it's not an existing architectural feature of the building. It's not like you got fancy corbels that you gotta cover with your sign, or anything like that.
No, no. I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that that Nichia would be more of an architectural feature than a sign by definition. If it's an architectural feature, then in a way, the sign is on an architectural feature, not a, another sign. Do you see the logic?
I don't. I see where you're angling from, but I don't see that as a-- I, I see you, you're creating a sign, not an architectural feature.
Yeah, so we're putting sign on architectural feature, so that, if it is an architectural feature, not a sign, and the sign we're proposing is not actually above the parapet, it's above, you know, it's on an architectural feature, so there's a little bit of an argument on that.
I guess one thing as well, too, is if they're gonna build that, that parapet which they, they've got the permit for, and you try to do a smaller sign, a little parapet, you'd have a very small sign, it would be off-center, it would just look really weird, like it would just, it would not look as intended as far as like a balanced look for the front of the building as well.
Good evening.
Okay.
I'm not texting you, I'm just looking up definitions. Don't, don't think I'm ignoring you. I forgot my code book today, but, so I'm just gonna, so don't, don't think I'm, I'm still listening, but--
Early in your presentation, you stated that this was not granted, it'd be financial hardship, take that for it. I have not heard what the financial hardship would be.
The, the store would be less successful if you couldn't identify it. The rationale of type all signage is to make sure that a building or, you know, a commercial enterprise is well-marked and well-identified. If you were to make this smaller, that the, it would be less well-identified and less commercially viable.
No, that's a good definition, but I don't buy all of it. Because this store has been around for many years.
Yep.
You just don't have the traveling public coming in, oh, there's Noreya, that's what we've been looking for. Most of the traffic is local.
Yep.
City of Gardner, some people visiting, but have been here. You've got the big Shell sign sitting out there, and if that's gonna say Noreya, you can't miss that.
Yep.
And if you need to tell people exactly where the doors are to get in, we've got a problem, because it's the only two fully glassed, according to this, two fully glassed entrance pieces, everything else is a wall.
Yep.
So it's kind of easy to see where the doors are. I mean, and I'm looking, is that the only Noreya sign, or does Noreya have different-sized signs?
They, they have different-sized signs, they have, they have signs in different locations, but essentially in this location, what we're trying to do is we're trying to perpetuate the image that Noreya has, essentially evolved to in the last probably four years. So most of the other signs, not all of them, most of the other signs were produced before Noreya essentially identified that image as to where they wanted to go. So there's a, there's an element in all signage and all imaging of this sort, that you really want where you can to get continuity, and the continuity part is the part that we're trying to achieve here. If you don't achieve continuity, you do lose revenue, because people don't identify the continuity of one site from another.
I remember there were signs illuminated internally.
This one here, this one here is halo-led, so this sign here, the word Noreya, the white circle and the green circle are halo-led, I'm sorry, are face-led, but the back of that is halo-led, so it is a very subtle light, it's not a very, not a very heavy light, it's not like a McDonald's where you have the whole thing blaring, so--
But it's eye-catching, so it really sort of illuminates the Noreya, et cetera. But it's eye catching. So it really sort of illuminates the Noreea, et cetera, as you look at it. So what is preventing Noreea from lowering the size of the sign so it doesn't go over the parapet? They can shrink the size of the circle of Noreea or if it's going to be, as you said, I'll call it illuminated. It still is not detrimental to what's going on. It's still above the doors. Coming down and unfortunately you lost an argument last year because you know where the circle is. Before you get here, that would be here.
Yep.
And that's when traffic goes around and goes off. We had about a forty foot Christmas tree right there, which actually blocked off the front of this door. I mean, people knew where Shell was, but it blocked off. Unfortunately, nature took care of that last year. The tree came down. So now it's open.
Yep.
As people come down this way and they're either going to Parker Street, West Street, Nickel Street, Oak Street. And I did it as a clock. So if I'm looking at the sign right now, six o'clock at the bottom would be, I'm calling the splitting of Parker and West coming down. So that's probably like a seven, eight and a four. But then around three o'clock, that, that would be going off to Oak Street.
Yep.
Nine o'clock goes right off to Nickel Street.
Yep.
Everything is wide open. There's nothing in that whole area coming down to obliterate that sign.
The, one point I'd raise is that the Natche uh parapet is eighteen inches higher than the regular parapet. So if we were to put a sign, this sign is currently four feet. So if we were to put a sign in that location, it would essentially halve in size if we wanted to keep it as a circular sign, which Noreea has a legitimate goal of trying to maintain. So you'd land up with not a four foot sign, but you land up with a two foot sign, which is very much smaller than is optimal in that location.
Well, it would greatly impact the actual legibility of the letters. Cause right now, once you shrink those letters, cause the letters are only about a quarter of the size of the sign itself. So if you shrink that sign down, everything gets trimmed down and becomes very hard and illegible to.
Yeah, but you have some good distance on the periphery of the sign. I'll look at your thing in the green, not just circular around most of Noreea, but to the right, left and top and bottom. You've got distance there. So really you're, you would shrink your block. I mean, if you got a little smaller sign, fine, but you could shrink that a little bit. At least on the top to come down to the parapet. I don't, I just, I'm not convinced that you're arguing for hardship. I don't see it. The hardship is yes, you won't be able to see so much so they can't sell them more. Your profit is not in our ordinance to say, you know, the applicant has to be generating more revenue. But it's the hardship of why you need it to violate the zoning ordinance.
If you're generating less revenue, then the store and the site become less viable. And there is an economic argument to say that that is, is the situation. So if we're, if we're not as successful because people can't see where we are, then it puts the enterprise at some risk.
So a, a couple of things, a parapet, so, so lack of a definition of a, of a bylaw ordinance, then you can go with the common definition. So a parapet is a low protective wall or barrier built along the edge of a roof. And you said this is going to be forward of the roof. Balcony or terrace served to prevent falls, conceal rooftop equipment and enhance the building's visual design.
It enhances the visual design?
Yeah, but prior when, when, when he asked you, how, is this sitting on top of the roof edge? And you said, no, it protrudes off the building. It's not part of it.
It's, it's built out.
So, so have you considered building a parapet wall across the whole front? You're, you're asking us to give you, give you relief because your, your sign is sticking above the roof line. Why not build a parapet wall across the whole front, conceal your, your, all your equipment that's up there? And then your sign is on a parapet wall?
The, the cost of doing that would be prohibitive.
You sure about that? That's, that's your opinion? Have you talked to your client?
I, I have, but I'm pretty sure that, I'm pretty sure the building of parapet wall would be, would be expensive.
Or wouldn't that be considered parapet wall if it was just tied in to the building? Doesn't that become part of that parapet wall if they tie, if they tied it into the top of that building? Cause right now they have, they are planning on doing this without the, the sign. So you have a blank space there. Essentially becomes a building with the parapet as part of the parapet wall.
Okay, I, I think that's a good point because if you decide you want to, you know, put another eighteen inches on the, on the, on the light tan uh wall to bring that up, um then you're essentially you're doing the same thing as putting the Natche uh, you know, the dark brown on that.
So you see the, the struggle we have to have is that, you know, we have an ordinance, right?
Understand.
And, you know, here's our basic rules, whether we like them or not. And, and in order to process grant you a lawful variance is that you have to have, demonstrate to us there's something unique about this property. That the next gas station down the road doesn't have the same, right? So what's so unique about this that you have to be hired? We've already established you have a nice pole sign up front. This is Noreea on it.
Yep.
You got Noreea on the, on the canopy and now you're just trying to identify where your front door is. And I realize the bigger the better because, you know, you just really want to pop and you're, but again, you, you have to demonstrate to us, how can we grant you a lawful variance that exceeds the requirements of our bylaw, whether we like them or not? You follow that?
Essentially, we're, we're being very modest in the sign sizes. This thing is sixteen square feet. The Dunkin' Donuts is thirteen, so it's twenty-nine square feet. We wouldn't be allowed eighty uh under these circumstances. So we're being very, very modest in the type of sign, uh, you know, in the, in the size of sign we're looking at. The, the real issue uh I would argue is whether the brown Natche box is a parapet or not. And I would argue that it, that in the lack of the definition, it, to me, it looks like a parapet. It feels like a parapet. It probably is a parapet.
One thing they try to do is usually we research the town ordinances for them and we usually use a sign within code. And then size is often around that. So that's why like the size of the sign would be allowed by code. It's just the fact of how it places. So like we could do a much larger sign of, you know, somewhere else in the building, but it's how they want it placed based on architectural consistency. You know, it's like Cumberland Farms, right? You see everything consistent with Cumberland Farms and how they do stuff. But we didn't, we, it's not like we're trying to get an eight foot sign and build a eight foot, you know, canopy. We're trying to stay within the confines, but just kind of, you know.
And we're bringing on a Noreea sign eighteen inches above the existing parapet, a, a miniscule amount.
Yeah. I think you, you brought up Duncan. Duncan meets the requirements. They're not violating everything, anything. So I mean, I don't look at that as an argument to get this sign, that Duncan is, you know, Duncan's doing what it's supposed to do. You're asking for an exception to the ordinance. You haven't convinced me of the hardship yet. And I mean, I thought Mr. Hanks put said, well, just build up the wall a little. You know, the cost of that, that's borne by Noreea and I'm sure the revenue, the extra revenue they generate will cover the cost of that very quickly. And that would take care of the thing or else shrink the sign and get it as close, as close as possible. If you were talking, you know, it's two inches over the parapet, I wouldn't even be arguing. Two inches is fine. That, nobody would even know it unless they got up there and looked at it. But, you know, we're talking, it's going up further or it's not in the line of the roof line or, or a parapet line.
You, you may not be able to make a determination, but I'd, I'd, I'd maybe propose something. If we took the parapet and we built the parapet out five feet out and we brought it up into a curve and it landed up at the top of the brown, the dark brown box and then dropped off the other side. So the parapet itself is, was increasing in height. Would that, would that satisfy the?
I can't answer that because that'd be the decision of the building inspector.
Okay.
But there's nothing in the ordinance that says the parapet wall has to be of uniform height.
Correct. So we couldn't.
So you would not necessarily have to build the parapet up for the whole length of the building. You just have to build it up for the sections immediately to the right and left of your architectural feature.
Maybe it would be a gentle curve.
Maybe you have like, I want to say two or three feet on each side of the sign and it would come up. It could come up. But that decision is for the building commissioner, not for us.
Understand that.
Yeah. So, so if you, if the building commissioner's zoning officer says that, yeah, that's a parapet wall now, you don't need us.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, no.
Because it, it, you know, we're just going by pure, pure definition of the, of the ordinance. It says that they can't stick up above the roof line or a parapet. That's what I'm saying. Well, why don't you build a parapet?
Right. That would be in fact part of the parapet. I mean, if it's tied in the building, it could be considered part of.
So that may be a, that may be a solution to, to what we're requesting.
So I've been, it seems that you're embracing that potential solution.
Yep.
Question I, I just wanted to make sure, are you going to be, the, the sign is two feet, three inches, uh, two tall? Is that what this measurement leans from the wall right here? Two feet, three inches?
The Natche, the, the back or the architectural feature of the building would be two foot three above the, the parapet, existing parapet.
But the sign doesn't encompass all of that. Does, it encompasses about eighteen inches.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then that's the interesting thing is like, again, that's kind of their, uh, part of their design feature is that, that dark brown background. So what is the sign versus what is the backdrop, which is the parapet? You know, so I'm struggling with that one because, you know, are we only looking at the circle? Are we looking at that whole thing that creates that visual aspect of, you know, the back dark brown backdrop?
Again, I'd argue, but your code basically says that, you know, inter, integral decorative or architectural features of the building are not considered signage. So I'd argue that this is a, an integral architectural feature. Or it's not really decorative, but it's, uh, it would be an integral. So it's not a sign. So the sign, I think, that building inspector was talking about was the, literally the Noreea, the Noreea circle. Not the brown thing, not the Natche board.
So could you explain to me one more time? I know you explained it earlier. It's so how, how is, how is that square constructed?
So it, it, it floats back into the roof section. Um, and it basically is essentially, if, if that, if that's your roof section, it, it looks like that and there's an entire structure behind, there's an entire structure behind that on the roof. And basically it, it comes off the roof, uh, or comes off the fascia by, um.
So they, so this here frame basically in the building where they come up, they come over and they come down and get framed in like a wall would, but they actually come in and attach over that parapet to give it like structure. So it's not just like on there. So it actually is hooked to the building.
So if you look at several feet behind it, there's, there's the structure that, that supports the whole Natche board.
So, so the dark brown portion, that actually is a board of the roof edge?
And inboard, yeah. It basically like comes over. So you get a thing and it's going to, it comes up here, it comes over the wall and it comes back down. Because that becomes their structure onto the top of that parapet. So they have to cut into this somehow. And basically it's framed out like you would a, a normal wall.
And it's connected.
Yeah, it's connected. Yeah. It's kind of, it basically comes over and hugs. It's like if you were to hug something over an edge, it gets attached through that and that's like where it can't go anywhere. Rather than if you just had something basically attached up here, it could.
So then it becomes part.
It's part of the wall. I mean. Yeah, it becomes part of the wall. It's not like, you can't just take it off.
It's not hooked, in a sense, it's not just hooked on. It's actually.
Yeah, it's attached to the wall.
It's attached to the wall. You're not cutting out the wall behind it and making that the, the parapet.
The term almost is shoebox to the wall.
You're attaching it to the parapet.
Correct.
That's what I was thinking. The flower boxes you see on railings.
It's not like that.
But it goes up like this so they can drop it down and they don't have, they hold it.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's not like that. It's much more substantial behind this. It's much more of a, you know, it's much more of a structure. It's properly framed and, you know, uh, incorporated into the, into the structure.
Bob, do you have any other questions?
No, I have no other questions. No. I'm sorry. I don't have any more.
You've come unprepared tonight. Um, we've talked about a number of things here. So we're looking at, let's say, item one, exactly what you've submitted. And we're saying it violates and at least in my opinion, you haven't convinced me about the hardship yet. Item two, you could build a parapet out that whole length of that wall. Now that could be expensive. Item three, if maybe you leave your sign, or no, there'll be four items. You can leave your sign and you build something out that looks attractive.
Yes, that would be.
You know, sort of like goes up and then, then there. And then touch base with the commissioner if she's okay with that. Now I know I didn't say it's okay. I'm just saying touch base.
Yep.
Or the fourth thing is change that sign to make it smaller, meet the existing parapet. You know, you can, I know, and I always ask the question about the size because several years ago, we had an applicant adamant for the sign they needed necessary to generate revenue or people could see it, et cetera. And I asked the question, is that the only sign your company has? No. They had multiple sizes so they could meet either most ordinances or make a quick change on the size. So that's why I asked the question.
Yep.
I had an answer behind me, knowing that most companies don't have one sign. They're flexible and they have to be. So I mean, those are a couple of things, the four things that are on the table. I'll tell you this, I'm not going to vote on this tonight because we have four things on the table, if that's okay with you gentlemen. I would like you to think about the four things that we talked about. Go to the building commissioner and talk with her. What we can do tonight is we can continue your case to next month. Option one. Option two, you don't like it, you can, you can withdraw this application without credentials. That means you can come back anytime. Or three, continue the case to next month. Have your monthly meeting with the building commissioner. You'll know what position you are in after you talk with her. Then you come back next month and you might say, I think we have this solved. The commissioner is okay with this. We don't have a problem.
Maybe we better. Or maybe we can withdraw at the next.
The company Noreea says build the whole thing over or we're going to shrink the sign. Hopefully you will have an answer next month.
I believe.
Mary Ella, what's the date for next month? I only ask them because I'm going to be in Wyoming part of November.
That's not hunting, hunting, is it?
I am forced to go.
You have a question for us?
Yeah, I have a question. Basically if we talk to the building commissioner, they say that that needs to be part of a parapet wall. Or if we can make that as part of a parapet wall, then they need.
If, if, if you, if you talk to building commissioner, the building commissioner agrees with you that you are building a, a parapet wall, then you're going to withdraw your petition with us because you don't need a variance at that point. All right? Yeah, you know, so again, talk to your client, find out if they want to build a parapet wall or look, look at design as to what can we make, do to make it look attractive that, and talk to commissioner and say, hey, we're thinking about building this. We think it's a parapet wall. And then your sign does not go, exceed it, then, then you don't need us.
Yep.
And then, then we're not put in a horrible position. Next time someone else comes along and say, well, you did it for them. And, you know, so we, we, we have to be cautious that, you know, do you have other alternatives? You know, right, you know, if you had no alternative and, uh, but I'm not seeing that you don't at this point personally. You know, just to be fair with you.
And I just want to add one more statement. It's the eighteenth next month. I will be back. Mr. Ranks will be gone. However, we can put him on conference call.
Yep.
And still conduct a meeting with him on conference call. But I just want you to know that, that we're not going to all of a sudden next month.
Yeah, you, you, you shouldn't be.
We have some work to do between now and then. We'll do that work. We'll do legwork and make sure that we hopefully get the building commissioner to agree that what we're doing is.
That would be ideal. Then you don't need a variance and it was lovely to meet you. That would be ideal, then you don't need a variance, and it was lovely to meet you.
And by the way, I'm not British, I'm South African.
I'm sorry?
Everyone thinks I'm British, you said, I'm from the UK, now I'm, I'm South African.
Yes.
Are, are we requesting the continuance?
Are you requesting a continuance?
Yes, I'm gonna do it.
We'd request it, we'd like to request a continuance.
Okay, now should we vote on granting that continuance?
I was asking, cause if we're requesting it, then there's no charge, if they're requesting it, there's a charge. So we've done a number of things, so I just wanna bring that up.
And we don't have an option for splitting it.
So, so unfortunately, Gardner requires, you pay a fee to have a continuance.
So you're requesting the continuance.
We're requesting the continuance.
Mariella will give you a form or something and sign it off, and then we can move forward. I mean, I think your project has, has a lot of merit.
Thank you.
But it doesn't get around the ordinance, and I'm not saying you didn't do well, you did. Unfortunately, Gardner's ordinance, um.
Could be outdated.
Needs to be updated, it's, it's old. Uh, I think ten or twelve, maybe a few more years since it was last updated, before that, it was about twenty. So, and I know it's being talked about through the council, potentially of running it, but to do a full-blown review of the ordinance and get a new one, the last try was eighty thousand dollars. It's a lot of money.
And it's a long process, I understand, but many, many towns are faced with the same thing.
Yeah.
Can I ask you, Ryan, do you have to allow roof signs?
Do we what?
Allow roof signs? Roof signs, signs, roof, I said, I just, sorry, are there any questions?
I'm gonna say no.
What?
Probably not.
Um, yeah, so, so as far as the product goes, Noria and everything, I love them, you know, they, like you said, it's a great alternative to the junk food you find in every other convenience store, so I welcome them, but let's just find a way that, you know, if you, without the variance, if possible.
Yes.
You know, you have avenues, you have avenues.
I, I think we have some, I think we have some guide, you know, guidelines that we'll employ.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you for your time, and enjoy, enjoy Wyoming, are you shooting, or are you fishing, or?
I'm not going to fish, I'm going hunting. And I'm going after mule deer.
Oh, really, okay.
Yeah, Wyoming has some pretty large mule deer. I was out there a couple of years ago for elk, and we did very well.
Yeah.
I'll say this, Wyoming has round numbers, five hundred and fifty thousand residents, or citizens. They have a total of almost eight hundred thousand black Angus cattle. So the cattle outnumber the residents. And the guide will tell you quickly, if you shoot one of those cattle, it's only gonna cost you thirty-five hundred dollars.
Do you get to keep it?
Yeah, you get to keep it.
No, it's a, it's a unique state, and, but I think we can work with you, but you gotta work with us at the same time.
This is, this is the way that we.
I'm sure this isn't the first time you've brought up, brought up something like this.
Absolutely, we, we understand, so, so, thank you very much.
So you are requesting continuance to that?
Yes, they did, so I'd make a motion, we continue this to the November eighteenth meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? Changes, suggestions, et cetera, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all in opposed? No, we're continuing this to November eighteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, sorry to bring you in.
No, no, don't be sorry.
We do this for free.
Now, what happened, that gentleman didn't come up at all?
He didn't call.
Yeah, we, we didn't get to meet you, you didn't come up at all or anything.
I thought they were keeping.
Did you just come to report back?
I thought they were keeping the big guns back there, not what they say.
It's a small gun?
Okay, gentlemen, uh, we've got some minutes here, we have to approve, we're signing. And this is September seventeenth, minutes. Mel will be the only one that can't sign, and Bob can sign, so we'll be, yeah, Mel. Have you all read them or seen this, now you can see these?
Haven't.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of September seventeenth?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Next one is August nineteenth, the minutes, and the voting signatures on this one, well, that will be the signers. Uh, Laurie, which is not here, but everybody else is all set.
Will we accept the minutes as presented?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no opposition, uh, minutes approved. Uh, do we have, we have no more items on the agenda for tonight, we're all set?
Motion to adjourn.
Do you wanna pass these?
Second.
As soon as you can.
Oh, any comments before we vote on the adjournment?
No, sir.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposition? None, meeting adjourned.